Afternoon, so we'll go ahead and get ready to begin. I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Program Zoning Commission. Today is Tuesday, March 24th, this is a special meeting. The time now is 4:03 PM. And the first item on our agenda is approval of the March 24, 2015 Agenda. We get a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Carol and seconded that we approve the March 24, 2015 Agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Oral presentations. If there is anyone at this time that would like to present something that is not on today's agenda, you may do so at this time. We ask you, please come to the podium, state your name and your address. Okay. Are you none? We will move on to new business. Our first item under the new business is a hearing. It's a site plan amendment for a request by Greenacre Storage for a site plan amendment to the CP Planned Commercial District for the purpose of constructing a new 108,500 square foot indoor storage facility generally located north of 233 to 235 Fisher Drive. That begins on page one, goes through 14. The time now is 4:05 and a hearing is scheduled at this time. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, photos and aerial photo were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on March 11, 2015." May I have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Steve and seconded that we receive and place this notice on file. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, staff report.
This is Miller with staff and I will also be covering item B on our agenda which is also associated, it's actually a special permit for the same site. The site is located or is zoned CP Planned Commercial District and has been since the adoption of the ordinance for 669 on February 25, 2004 when it was rezoned from A1 Agricultural District. Professional offices are located to the northeast and south of the property in question and were constructed in the early 2000s. The property to the west is currently vacant. The property in question is not located within a flat plain hazard area. The applicant is requesting a special permit and site plan amendment for the proposed construction of a new indoor storage facility. The applicant has submitted two site plans. The first site plan shows a three-story, 103,200 square foot building along with a one-story, 3,500 square foot unloading garage. Site plan number one also shows 18 regular parking spaces and six truck spaces with the majority of the parking shown along the northerly side of the building with eight of the regular parking spaces along Wind Street. Site plan number two shows a three-story, 105,000 square foot building along with a one-story, 3,500 square foot unloading garage. The site plan shows 19 regular parking spaces and seven truck spaces. The parking requirements for a storage facility is one parking spot per two employees and the applicant has indicated that there would be less than four employees, therefore parking requirements would be met for both site plans. Both site plans show one access point from Fisher Drive to the south and two access points are shown from Tower Park Drive. The applicant has indicated that they proposed project is entirely indoor storage facility with a well-designed building that will have an appearance of a professional office as opposed to your typical storage facilities. The applicant also noted that other similar facilities he operates typically average about 20 vehicles per day visiting the site, so it appeared that the facility would generate a low amount of traffic for the area. The applicant has submitted multiple site plans to the commission to show the flexibility in the parking and the footprint of the building. The area is designated for Business Park on the future land use map contained within the comprehensive plan developments such as one of the pro- such as one of developments such as the one proposed today are typically located along major entries into the community to allow for property sign of traffic movements as well as promote such land for development. This area located is located between San Marnon Drive and Highway 20 which would appear to be appropriate area for the Business Park development. Storage facilities may be constructed within the C2 District upon special permit which shall review, which is reviewed, which shall review the location for compatibility of surrounding area, highest and best use of land and proximity to major thoroughfare. It is the intent for such uses to be towards the rear of the highly visible commercial property. The property in question is located within the CP Planned Commercial District which allows for uses permitted within the C2 District. Storage facilities are permitted within the C2 District after the approval of a special permit. The applicant has come before the Planning and Zoning Commission before on February 3, 2015, the request to rezone, for a request to rezone the north, a lot northwest of the property in question. The rezone request did hear opposition from the homeowners when going before city council, therefore the request was denied. The site plan in question is located further to the south and away from the residence to the north and is already zoned CP Planned Commercial District, therefore no rezone is required. Therefore, staff is recommending that the request for a site plan amendment to the CP District and a special permit for the purpose of constructing a new 108,500 square foot indoor storage facility generally located north of 233 and 235 Fisher Drive be approved for the following reasons. It would appear that the special permit and site plan amendment would not have negative impact on the area. The request is located within the primary growth area and can be served by extension of existing utilities. The request would be in accordance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for the area subject to the following condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. And I will note that we had two letters submitted, one today, well, I guess two today, and we did have a phone call from another individual, surrounding landowner, in opposition to their request, and I have submitted those letters to the commission.
Any questions for staff?
Yes. This is Thornsberry. I have a question as to why we were handed zoning ordinance number 5079, Mr. Anderson.
This is actually, this is Anderson with staff. This is actually, zoning ordinance 5079 is at the title. What I've outlined for some information here for you is the difference in the wording of the intent and the uses permitted in the RP, which is the Planned Residence District, the CP, which is the Planned Commercial District, and the BP, which is the Business Park District. So I wanted you to have those in front of you where you can see, because again, this is a business park area roughly stretching from Kimball to Forest Street, San Marnon to 20, and even some areas south of 20 between Kimball and Ainsborough that is zoned a majority of these with the RP being along San Marnon, the CP being at kind of the quarter mile sections and the BP being to the south. As you get through that document, it also goes through a history of the area, and I'll go through this in a little bit if you'd like, or now, but it talks about a history of the area, the specifics of this site for the site plan amendment before you.
Okay, one more thing. Then here in the staff report, it references ordinance 4669.
Zoning ordinance number 5079 is the overall zoning ordinance, which would contain the specifics of the districts. That ordinance number would be the specific to the rezoning of the land.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. For those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask you, please come to the microphone and identify yourself and name and address. The members of the commission should also identify themselves before speaking to the microphones.
Hi. Deborah Green, Cedar Rapids, Greenacre Storage. Just wanted to go over some of the concerns that we had heard from the last meeting and from what we have from the people today. One thing is lighting was a concern. We're back off of San Marnon, now closer to Highway 20. We did look at the businesses around. The dental office actually has six overhead lights. We're proposing like what our Dubuque office has. It has two, so we're actually less than half of what that one has, and that's right on San Marnon, so there's a lot more lighting in those offices. We looked at all of them from the orthodontics, which has four, the NXT Bank has five, Hertz Farm Management actually has double fixtures, five of them, and we actually noticed that they go on around 4:30 and stay on. So those are lights that are right on San Marnon. So as far as ours, we're back off of it and we're going to have less than half of what most of the businesses along San Marnon has. So I wanted to address that. Another concern was traffic. We average about 20 vehicles a day. In our Dubuque office, similar facility, a three-story structure, I'm out there pretty much every day. I see the traffic and it would be a lot less than even the dentist's office if you look how many come and go. And right behind the GMAC, they actually have a lot of employees. They expanded the parking lot for that. So, you know, we're going to actually have a lot less traffic than most businesses around there. And then I guess the last thing is just kind of educating what we are. The opponents or, you know, people that have had some concerns, I guess I would like them to actually come visit or reach out to the owner or myself as far as what our business is. This is a third generation storage facility, brand new. There's only two in the state, and that's what storage is going to. It's not like your long rows, outdoor store where you're pulling up the doors. This is all enclosed. Nobody will see things because when a person comes, the garage door opens up because it's automatic on a sensor. They pull in, it closes, nobody's going to see anything as far as what people are loading or unloading. So it's a very professional office. Our Marion location is eight years old. People come in there and ask if it's brand new. We keep it professional and, you know, it just, we, we aren't the traditional storage facility. This is a new generation and a new way of storing. So that's what I wanted to address. What questions do you have for me?
This is Gustafson. My son lived in Las Vegas, and so I'm very, very knowledgeable about this kind of storage unit and was very comfortable when I saw you bring it the first time and felt like, you know, that is a really good match for that area. I didn't realize that the neighbors across San Marnon felt that that was not going to be a good fit for them, but I totally support what you're trying to do and I think this is a really great step up for Waterloo.
I appreciate that, and I think it would be a great asset. You know, with what had come before with the lighting and the traffic, those are not an issue because we're a lot less than what the businesses are there and it's a professional building. It's not a warehouse, it's not a storage, we're a third grade, third generation storage facility, a new concept.
This is Thornsberry. I rented one of these in Reno, Nevada, and I think they're terrific, just climate controlled, clean, neat, just, they're terrific, and I too support this.
Thank you.
This is Buckles. You mentioned GMAC, is that the building to the south of where you're going to build?
Correct. Yep, and I guess it's not GMAC, I should correct myself.
Yeah, I don't either.
It's Veridian, I apologize. And then I guess-
Oh, Veridian owns it now.
Correct.
Because I know when GMAC owned it, it was a storage facility for files.
I know.
Is it still?
And that's exactly, I mean, like we had presented before, you know, 30% of ours is a commercial, so we do record storage, we do storing of that. But yeah, I guess it's Veridian and then they lease out to another business that does some data entry, is what I understand. So quite a few employees and that's why they expanded the parking lot.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Roush, I'm general counsel for Locker Development Incorporated, 4501 Prairie Parkway in Seer Falls. I'm here today on behalf of my client to oppose this request, really on, on, on three bases. Number one, it's not the highest and best use of the land. Number two, subsection A20 of ordinance C2 provides, as the lady was reading into the record in part, that it is the intent of the provision that such uses be toward the rear of highly visible commercial property. Simply put, there is no way that the applicant can meet that standard. This is not towards the rear of this development. In fact, it's right in the middle of this development. As far as meeting the highest and best use of the land, the developments, the projects, the buildings around there are, to my knowledge, for the most part, offices. And the third element of my objection is whether or not it's compatibly designed. Subsection B of the CP Planned Commercial District provides some definition for compatibility design for commercial uses. There was some discussion regarding lighting. Part of that is that the building design complement the surrounding development. I know there have been some discussion by the applicant that it in fact does. I don't believe that it does. In the request that we received, it showed metal, metal framing and what appeared to me to be metal or aluminum siding to a large degree around the property. That certainly does not meet compatibility standards under, under the ordinance as far as compatibility of design to complement the surrounding development. So really, it's on these three bases that we would oppose the request that the applicant has made. Do you have any questions?
I have a question, but I don't know if the staff can answer it. On the design of the siding, this looks very similar to what we approved by U-Haul and University. Is that similar material? Okay. We did sort of approve the same type of material on the U-Haul building on University Avenue over, do you know where Happy Drive is? They're going to be building, sorry, it's the same type of material and it was approved for construction and under the zoning guidelines.
And in the, in the, in the buildings in the immediate surrounding area, those have, I, I don't know, it's a question, it's not a statement, did those have aluminum siding as well? Was it compatible with those buildings or?
I don't know. What do you think so far?
So Anderson with staff, I believe the Young Plumbing and Heating building right behind it has a majority of metal siding on portions of its building.
Yeah, it does some in the, is that what I hope?
Yes.
That's right there too. That is McDonald's on the other side. Yeah. The issue compatibility with other uses, when I saw this request, I supported it the first time as well and understood, then later talking about the neighbors and kind of what they'd been promised when the area was rezoned, that was when it was to the north. But when I saw it and it came up here in this property, the compatibility with the other uses, I think for the most part that other uses around that area are now bean fields or just grass. That area's been unfortunately undeveloped for decades. And so I think with the compatibility of other uses, right now there's nothing and I would say a majority of the stuff around both in the southern part of Tower Park and then also to the, to the west and to the northwest as well. So I, I haven't had as many concerns about the compatibility and also on the highest and best use of the land. Again, right now, that area, I didn't read it until I got here this report, but I think only 12% of that land has been developed in the last 10 years.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Of the, of the 320 acres rezoned in 2004.
Okay. Got it. So it's, when I saw this, I was excited that, well, here's something going in and that looks very professionally done as well. And I actually saw the one in Dubuque. I didn't, it was after we had this, but I didn't get close to inspect it, but I saw it as it was driving by. And it looked, it looked different than I would think of a typical storage facility. And so that allayed a lot of the fears that I had.
That, if I may respond to that, Mr. Young, my, my, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm, I'm going off of the, the, what we received in the way of a request for the rendering that's attached to the request and also the, the statements that were made here today by the applicant that the, the building would be, I believe the statement made was, would be brick. I think certainly if, if it's going to be brick all the way around, then, so, you know, I, I don't know that I would have any leg to stand on as far as, as a compatibility argument with, with the surrounding development, which what has been built there over time. But the statements that were made by the applicant, when compared to the request that was sent out, are inconsistent. So I, I appreciate the fact that the commission's apparently excited about, about the, the request that's going to be made, but it's not, we still, we don't believe that it, that it meets the standards that are espoused in Waterloo's own zoning ordinance and the, what has been requested and, and circulated to the affected property owners, my client of which is, is one, is inconsistent with the, with the statements that have been made by the applicant.
And partly, I'm just a little bit sensitive on this, because on the school board, we started the process last night of setting the property tax rate for the next year, and so in that we go through a long list of factors that go into it. One of the major ones is tax base. It actually dropped again this year after last year, and so that's why when I look at this, it's, fortunately that because our enrollment's been up, that helped a lot, and then also some changes with the state, so we were able to lower the tax rate in the school district, but it was thanks to other factors. And so, but in looking at the, the tax base, that's where you, in the best scenario, you have a growing tax base which spreads the tax rate out for everybody else. You kind of share the cost a little bit more. And so I understand exactly what you're saying about the, those factors, but right now, again, that's still kind of fresh in my mind, so I'm looking at it as well with the tax base. And that's where I see that if there's 88% of that area that has not been developed in the last year, assuming that property taxes on that property now are just as an undeveloped parcel and probably talking hundreds of dollars a year as opposed to thousands.
This is Schrader with staff. I just wanted to make a comment that although I would concede that there is open to individual interpretation as to whether or not, you know, the building would, has a design that is, that complements surrounding development, that can be open to individual interpretation. I kind of understand that. But to make an assessment that it doesn't comply with the standards of the ordinance, other than that one wording there, that's an incorrect statement. There's nothing that doesn't comply with the ordinance. There's that interpretation of compatibility of design, but there's nothing that doesn't comply with the ordinance.
So compared with, if I may, compared with surrounding office uses predominantly, from what I understand exclusively, office uses, you believe that a storage facility is, fulfills highest and best use when compared to office uses?
An indoor climate-controlled storage facility like this that has never been seen in this city, let alone only a couple in the state of the Iowa that looks like a professional office complex, there, there's nothing that prevents a, a regular office complex, bank, doctor's office, or anything of that nature from putting up metal siding as well. And it doesn't, it has a significant amount of brick. You can see the renderings on the sheet. Yes, they do show some vertical metal siding in between as well as some other design elements. I would say that is a well-designed building, yes.
Okay, so you believe it meets highest and best use when compared with other office uses, storage?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And, and just one more note on that, the formerly GMAC, now Veridian building was rezoned in 1999 and approved as an office and record storage facility. And obviously, when that was rezoned and approved and built, obviously, it was R4 with conditions, they didn't have a lot of the planned districts back in 99. Obviously, when they approved that, the planning commission and city council thought that was the highest and best use of that area along Highway 20.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate you. And I do understand where you're coming from, but when I look at this, looking at what is the best use of land, I think it's subjective. I think everyone may have a different interpretation what could be the best use of land, and when we have to make a decision, I look at it, what does the law say, what does the code say, and there's a fine line. We have to look at all things. When I look at, I think ADI is not far from there. Now, I worked for a doctor for a while that did have radiological and x-ray, and that isn't strictly office. You have to deal with OSHA standards, you have to deal with chemicals, there are certain things that you have to be very careful in case something accidental should happen, should it be leaked. So it's, some things are not strictly offices. And when I looked at originally too, I, I didn't see an issue, but I can see now, as we've moved it further away from the residences, I do feel it is a little more compatible fit. And we want to be fair that if we look at something from a business point of view, if they've met all the codes, it falls the regulations, there's similar buildings, I can't speak for all the commission, but I, I think there's many of us who agree, we, we have to look at, have they met everything according to the zoning codes and rules? And we did get letters of recommendation from some of the buildings where they've been before, and I know that helps sway my decision because when we think of storage facility, we do typically think of backing it in, backing it out. My daughter, which she just used one over by U-Haul, it looked like a garage. This was completely different. And the fact that it is climate-controlled, and when I see the outside, it, to me, it looks more like office space, office buildings. So I think there's been an effort to try to be as compatible as possible, as well as try to be as aesthetic on the outside and it be as low impact as far as disturbing with vehicle, traffic coming out, lighting. I don't know where else they could go that they're not going to get opposition. I think possibly the fact that it's a storage facility may be what may be hindering. But those are my thoughts, and when I hear it will lower property values, we hear that quite a bit in the commission, and I want, if it does, I would, I would feel better decision if I saw evidence of that. And I don't think we've ever had evidence brought to us saying that creating in this building would lower property values. If it did, I certainly would be open to say maybe we need to take a second look, but that was a concern in one of the letters, but I have not seen anything that would show that. So that's, I think where some are coming from, because we do get the materials and then we try to read through everything. But in fairness, I think to make a decision, we have to look at everything, and if they have complied with everything by the laws and codes, it would be hard for us to rule against something because it's saying you've done everything right, we just don't want you there. And I think no matter what you build, an unused space, there's going to be people for and people against. And I just want to clarify, I think that's where some are coming from. And so far from what I've seen, they've pretty well complied with everything. There's similar buildings, that kind of siding. Some of our commission have gone and they've seen actual buildings like that, so I just wanted to clarify. At the same time, we appreciate your concern because it's something new and we, we want to be respectful to all of the residents and business owners.
You know, I, I, Ms. Tack, I appreciate your, your comment about coming before the commission with, with, with evidence regarding what might be alleged decreases in property value. I can, I could certainly come up with evidence to argue just about anything and put on, put on expert witnesses and just about anything for, for, for any side of an argument. My, my client obviously has a vested interest, we have 9.6 acres in the immediately adjacent area to develop. My client has been a longstanding, as you know, active, very active participant in, in Waterloo. And so it just- And so it just, it seems to me, I don't mean to sound like I'm repeating myself here in the arguments, but it just, it seems to me that I don't, the decision the commission makes, that's the decision you make, but I don't, I don't see how, and I understand the tax base argument, and I realize that's extremely important to any municipality today. But I think by clear reading of your own zoning ordinance, I don't see how that you can, you can, you can make a successful analysis, successful decision that metal sided buildings, I grant, grant indoor storage facilities are, of course, better than the typical ones where you, where you draw doors from the outside and they're orange. And when I think of those, I think of orange doors. Grant, this is something different, and it's much better than those, but it's still, I don't think it's appropriate for this area. And, but I do appreciate your time.
And we appreciate you coming and sharing, because that does make a difference. We like to hear from all sides. So I appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience, either for or against this request? If not, then I turn back the commission for a motion to close the hearing. So move.
Second.
Okay, so move by Carol. And second, that we close the hearing at this time, is there any discussion?
This is Anderson with staff, and I don't know if you want me to go through a little bit more of the history, since you brought it up, Thorndyke Barrier. Just quickly, and again, I, what I wanted you to have in front of you was the differences between the RP, the CP, and the BP, which again, was the planned residence, the planned commercial, and the business part. I put up on the screen, and there's also a map back here behind Mr. Buckles, of the zoning map. You can see this area with the RP being in the green, the CP being in the red, and the business part being in the blue. There was a, there was a, three different areas being rezoned in this entire section. Then there's also a C2 CZ, which is the red and white striped areas, which were existing areas, which is Tower Park on the right side of the screen, and VGM Campus on the left side of the screen. So again, when they rezoned this back in 2004, there was a lot of, you know, it's difficult to rezone large tracts of land. At the same time, they were trying to look at creating a symbiotic business park type layout. You can see that the majority of the land up along San Marnon, near the residences, was zoned R4 RP, which is the office park part. The CP locations were put at the quarter mile sections. As you drive that section of roadway as it's developed over time, the quarter mile sections are the ones that will have full intersections at them in terms of where you can come out and turn left or right. The, any other roads that would come up there would be right in, right out only. So potentially, there could be lights there at the quarter mile, but again, we were trying to limit where we would have full turning movements at. And again, the business park, which again allows professional office and commercial and industrial compatibly designed, is down along Highway 20. Again, we wanted to take advantage of Highway 20 being in this area for visibility and recognizing that, you know, we're not going to have 100% office development, we're not going to have 100% commercial or 100% industrial development. So we wanted to have a mix in this area of the business park. We really believe that the storage building would help to serve some of the employees that are currently out there that may have some storage needs. It puts a mix of traffic in there, a mix of uses, maybe even a mix of times of operations of the day to help disperse some of that traffic. So again, we think it's a, it's a good use for the area. But I want you to recognize that it is kind of zoned in layers for the most part, getting a little bit more heavier as you get down to Highway 20. And that comes into your, your definition of compatibly designed. Obviously, at this point, the majority of development out there has been office use, but again, that's all been in the RP. As you move down into the CP and the BP, we're going to have the potential of more commercial and more industrial type uses. And again, there are different zoning classifications, so you have to look at that when you're comparing the compatibility of the different districts. Quickly, on the history of the area, again, in 2004, over 320 acres of land were rezoned all the way stretching from Westforth, just a little bit off the screen, over to Kimball, from San Marnon down to, and you can see the BP south of 20 that included in that for the 320 acres. Right now, 39.509 of those acres have been developed, or about 12.34% in the last 10 years. So that leaves 280.491 acres available for further development. That equates to about 11 office buildings. I say about 11 because one of those was an addition by VGM, so it wasn't a new office, but it was a, an addition, a large addition to their building out there in 2006. Note, the RP district up there is set up for residential. This particular zoning of this area did not allow residential in there, so that is pretty much all office use. There is an allowance in the RP section for 10% commercial development if there was some kind of a small site that they wanted to have a, some kind of a neighborhood commercial use that they thought would be beneficial to the, to the offices. Types of uses that have gone out here before, again, VGM, these are, it was kind of a unique area. VGM was approved in 1995. The reason they were a C2 CZ, which is a conditional zoning, again, before the planned districts were in place, they were specifically built as office buildings with up to 10% of each office building or a total building square footage of 10% for storage space. And again, they had a, they had a large amount of equipment that they were utilizing out of the VGM companies, that they thought they may have one building dedicated to storage, the others to office. So again, it's, it's that type of area. Again, we talked about the GMAC one, which was approved in 1999 as an office and record storage facility. Obviously, they didn't need that much specific office space, the majority of that square footage was put out there for record storage. Just other things you should be aware of in the zoning ordinance, under the C1 wording, like under accessory uses, the storage of merchandise incidental to the principal use may be stored in the principal building on the lot in question, not to exceed 40% of the floor area for said principal building. I just wanted to point out that there's a lot of buildings out there that are used for something else, but there is storage in them as well. So again, it's not like a storage building, especially one like this, it's indoor storage facility, is out of place in these types of areas. And just kind of talked about, a little bit about the special permit, again, touching upon that again. This site is not zoned RP, it is zoned CP. The CP allows uses permitted in the C1 and C2 districts. The storage rental development, as it's worded in the zoning ordinance, is a permitted use in the C2 district upon issuance of a special permit. The special permit notes that they, we shall review the location for compatibility of surrounding highest and best use of land and proximity to a major thoroughfare. Is the intent of this provision for such uses to be towards the rear of highly visible commercial property. We believe the site is appropriately zoned. Please, try to look over my spelling there. The special permit looks at compatibility. The building is designed similar to an office building. It has less lighting than a typical office building in the area. The proximity to a major thoroughfare, the site is located within the business park setting itself on a local street, as it was denied right up on San Marnon, which is the major thoroughfare in this area, due to concerns from the residential to the north. The site is a budding of BP business park, which again, would allow industrial type uses, classifications to the west, and commercial classifications to the south and to the north. In summary, staff believes the site plan meets all applicable requirements.
Any questions or further discussion? We'll turn it over to the commission for a motion.
Are you having a motion in second?
Oh, yeah. Okay, you're right, first motion. Okay, you're right. Thanks, Eric. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. At this time, if we have any other discussion, turn it back to the commission, otherwise I would ask for a motion.
I move that we approve the request for a special permit for the purpose of constructing a new 108,500 square foot indoor storage facility generally located north of 233 to 235 Fisher Drive, with the following condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Second.
And do you want to make that for the site plan and the special permit?
I do want to make that for the site plan and the special permit.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so move by Jerry. And second, that we approve both the site plan amendment and the special permit for green acre storage with the items listed in all city codes, applications, and there will be outlined in the motion. Is there any discussion?
I would just again like to thank the applicant and then the neighboring landowners who are here and wrote in as well. I understand this, I get it, in that it's, when you hear storage facility, I thought of something different than the picture we have in front of us and what I saw in Dubuque. But my comfort level is here, and I support this, because this seems like a much higher quality facility than a typical storage facility. And there's no perfect place to put it, but when I saw this on the agenda, and just saw this come in, I guess, at the end of last week, I thought this was a good fit for this particular spot in an area that has not been developed very much over the years. And so I think this will be a, a good fit for the neighborhood, so that's why I support it.
Any other discussion? Let's take a roll call though.
Thorndyke.
Yes.
Gufferson.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Buckles.
Yes.
Tackett.
Yes.
Approved.
Motion is approved. And before we move on, I would again like to thank both sides for sharing. What I like about commission is that we do hear from both sides, and it is important, because sometimes we do sway and we like to get all information, and also gives every information, since this will go on to the Board of Adjustments, and then the City Council, I think, gives both sides something to think about or, or something, if there's issues to be addressed, hopefully can work them out and go through. I hope we can find the good neighbors and work together, because we've had some kind of contentious things in the past, but in the end, both sides have been able to work things out, and I hope it works out this time, too, that we have good neighbors and it's best for everybody. So with that, I'll move on to discussion of items. Is there anything else?
Just one note, so this was a special meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the special permit has a final decision by the Board of Adjustment, and that meeting will follow this one at 5:00. And the council meeting on it is set for next Monday at 5:30.
Okay. Good. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I, is it discussion items?
Yes.
Okay, this is my last meeting, and so I was worried my last meeting would have something on the agenda where there was no opposition, and just went through like that. But I was not disappointed. And I am on the commission here because I'm on the school board. I'm not running for reelection on the school board, but that term doesn't end until September. But when there was the, the training session for, that Iowa State Extension is putting on, it's
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. There, I thought that was a good time, I'm going to be transitioning out anyways, so that'd be a good time for somebody else on the school board who would take the spot to come in and start the training. So Sue Flynn, who's another school board member, graciously agreed to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So she'll be here on the 7th of April. The school board approved it last night for her to start on the 7th. She'll go to the training session, though, next Tuesday. And I won't, I'm planning on being here on the 7th just to kind of talk through things with Sue, but she'll be the one voting and all that. So I'd just like to thank everybody, the commission members, city council members. I've learned a ton, and a special thanks to the city staff. I've learned throughout this process, some of the meetings aren't the most fun, where there are contentious items, but I think it's been very worthwhile, and I appreciate everybody. It's been good working with you. Thank you.
Same here, Mike.
Thank you.
And my final discussion item, the time for next week's meeting is at 5:00 or 5:30 down at the Waterloo Center?
5:30.
5:30.
Okay.
So it's going to be 5:30 at the Waterloo Center of the Arts. And with that, do we have any other discussion items? Okay. It's quarter till, so we're doing good for time. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, so move by Stephen. Second, that we adjourn our meeting, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you for your time.